Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dean Wiles from Abundant Grace Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mojave Community College led by Linda Merritt.
Father in heaven, we just thank you for this opportunity to just gather in a great country and a great city. Holy Spirit, we welcome your presence into this room. Lord, we ask for your wisdom and your will to be done tonight. God, we pray that this meeting will go efficiently, all will go well. God, we pray that even over this podium, that the words spoken on this podium would be, that they would be words and responses of respect. And God, we just come against anything that would be reactions of rudeness. Lord, I just thank you for the freedom of speech, but God, help each one just to remember out of their words, reflect their heart. And so, Lord, we just pray for our leadership in the room, God, that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions. God, if there's issues that they need to think about more or realize, I pray that you just use people to be able to respectfully submit those ideas. God, we are a community, and I just thank you for this community. Help us just to continue to honor each other. And Lord, we just take a moment just to pray for all the emergency personnel, God, firefighters, police officers that are out doing their duties tonight, God, that you would give them wisdom, protect them, and just guide them as they protect us and serve us. Again, Lord, I pray your blessings and your favor over Lake Havasu City, over each resident. God, I pray that this place would be a haven of happiness for everyone that comes. Lord, again, just guide this night. Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And good evening, Lynn. Thank you for being here. If you would like to share a little bit about your organization?
Sure. So I currently am working for Mojave Community College. I am the Executive Director for the foundation, and I also wear another hat where I am the Director of College Advancement for MCC. We are also, like the London Bridge, celebrating 50 years this year, and we'll be having an event on December 17th, and we're hoping anyone that's interested might come out and join us. Fun fact about MCC is the very first program they started with was nursing. And so 50 years later, it's still one of our star-shining programs where the last two or three years, the students that have come out have passed the NCLEX. I don't know what that stands for, but that's the exam so they can be licensed to be practicing in Mojave County, and they've passed it at 100% rate. So we're pretty proud of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do people get tickets to the event on December 16?
I brought some if anyone was interested.
Okay, and those watching at home can go to a website?
Yep, www.mojave.edu/mcc50gala. So MCC 50 Gala.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
I'm here, but I gotta be out of here by 1:00.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch?
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our call to the public. This is where citizens have an opportunity to address the City Council on any matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Speakers are limited to three minutes. There's a light indicator box next to the podium. Green means you have three minutes, yellow means one minute is remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. You don't have to sign up to speak, but we did have a couple that did, so we'll start with those, and then anyone else that would like to address the council. If you are here for an item that's on the agenda, we recommend you wait till that time so we can have a two-way conversation, because during the call to the public, we can only listen intently to the words. So I will start with Christine Simmons. Yeah, good evening and welcome.
Hello, everyone. Do you know these are Freedom Roses? And the reason they're called Freedom is the color. Isn't it gorgeous? And I brought one for each of you tonight to bribe you. No, I'm just joking. They are Freedom Roses. I found this book today for Pete Buttigieg to read to his twins since he was absentee for two months. It's about all the things that go, and there's all kinds of things in here, but I don't think they go on green fuel. There's fire engines, there's tractors, there's cement trucks, there's satellites, I mean rocket ships and jets, like the ones that went to Scotland recently, and all the fuel that was used in the cars over there. So anyway, this is a great book for children to realize what makes things really go in America. Today I met a veteran. That's why I'm kind of dressed, because we're going to have a Veterans Parade on Thursday. And I met a veteran at the American Legion this morning, and I said, "Thank you for your service and have a wonderful Veterans Day." And his answer was to me, "I'd do it all again." He was a veteran from Vietnam. I lost classmates in Vietnam, and they were not well-received when they came back, but he would do it all again. So thank you for your service, veterans in town. I'm representing PACE tonight. We're going to be at the parade. PACE is Patriotic Americans for Constitutional Education. And you know, thank you. And for our youth to learn about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. You know, Canada's a wonderful country, but they don't have the same rights we do. Are you gonna run to Canada? No, I don't think so. So these are some of the materials that they're providing to the teachers. Teachers get a $500 stipend. They teach one or two days after school, first grade through eighth grade. These are some of the materials that they receive to use in their classroom. I didn't realize that some of our founding fathers weren't really born here in the US. Many are from Scotland and Ireland, but they gave up everything, everything, to become a founding father. So I encourage parents to see if there's a PACE program at your school. Right now, we have it at the Our Lady of the Lake, Tellusis, Oro Grande, Starline, and Smoke Tree. So encourage your teachers. It's an after-school program. It's a free club to your students, and they're learning wonderful facts, facts that I didn't know. So I have an inspiring quote. Someone sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago. That was Warren Buffett, and he said, "The importance of long-term thinking and investing in the future. I can't think of anything better to invest in than our youth." So join me. Think of joining PACE. We meet Tuesday mornings.
If you could wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second Tuesday of the month at the American Legion. All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peggy Paulas? Paula. Sorry about that. Good evening and welcome.
Excuse me. My name is Peggy Pollock, and once again, I am talking to you about a four-way stop on McCullough and Eldorado. It is a serious, serious problem. I'd hoped to address you at the mayor's meeting on November 5th, but unfortunately, that didn't happen, where we could actually have a dialogue. I now find it safer for me to make a right-hand turn on McCullough and Eldorado because I drive a little sedan. Everybody else is in SUVs and pickups. Make a right-hand turn, a right-hand turn, hit the cul-de-sac, make a left-hand turn to go west where all my business is. I'm a retired teacher. It's my civic responsibility, I feel, to make the streets safer for our kids. There are a ton of kids on Eldorado. Speed limit is 25. Nobody ever drives 25, ever. And speed limit on McCullough is 35. Nobody ever drives 35. It really needs to be addressed, and I'm hoping that someone will tell me what I should do next to take this forward. Also, I would like to say that I talked to a lady at the front desk of City Hall at the information desk, and her name is... She's really good. She was just so good at the information desk. Kudos to her. Her name is Terry Eller. She gave me all kinds of information and helped to follow up. So I wanted to say, give her kudos for helping me so much. And I want, if anybody can give me any information on what I should do next. If it comes to passing a petition, would be helpful. I'm more than willing to do it. I would like to say that I love this city. Our police department is the best in the nation. I walk Rotary Park every morning and feel safe. This is my dream place to live, but it's got to be safer at that corner. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Peggy. Yeah. And I'll reach out to you this week, Peggy, and we can talk about next steps. I'll reach out to you this week, and we can talk about next steps. Yeah. Yes, yes. Would anyone else like to address City Council during Call to the Public? Yeah, if so, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Don Wisdom. I'm asking if you have a follow-up program. I was here when you voted on the courthouse. I haven't heard anything about it. Have we got any information from them? They got any new kind of a little colored paper stain they can put up on the wall? I'd like to see some drawings. I'd like to see, really, I'd like to see a model of what they're gonna do. Most architectural firms give you a little model. This is what we're gonna build. I know you have conversations with them outside of what we know, but like what kind of material they're gonna use and so forth. So I haven't heard of any follow-up on any meetings we've had before, and I haven't been here that many, but I'm gonna be here more. The other thing, and we haven't heard anything about the lawn up on McCullough. What's going on? They had a program there Saturday, a lot of people there, and where are we at with that? I have other questions, but I'll wait.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Would anyone else like to address the City Council at Call to the Public? Yes, sir. Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Bill Wilson. I haven't heard anything about the issue of the helicopter wanting to use the island. I would like to see that happen. One of your council members is a balloon pilot. That's great. Balloons are here once a year. There are a few people, balloon pilots, that you see flying around occasionally, but a helicopter, for the four or five days that we have the balloon festival, if the helicopter has to stay underground, I can go with that, but he should be able to operate a business and have people that he's paying. People are working. So that's one thing I have. Also, to the lady about the traffic, you're right on. You were right on. I live on a residential street, and 25 miles an hour is the speed limit, but 35, 40 is even better. Don't see a policeman around. What's the take for a radar gun once in a while? Because word will get out. And also with the courthouse, I'd like to see something going on there. And I'm a little eerie about the park that's gonna be going on or the people place, I think is what you're calling it, on McCullough. We bring all these people in from the outside to do all this stuff, and we pay lots of money for it, but I sure don't see anything going on. I don't see any progress. So just careful how you vote, because I vote, and I will be keeping track of your votes. I'm not here for every meeting, but I do come, so I will be keeping track. I vote, so be careful how you vote. Think about us. Us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council at Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Next item on the agenda is number six, our Consent Agenda. We have the Consent Agenda as presented. However, item 6.1, we would need to table that for separate discussion, but other than that, we're the consent agenda as is as is. Do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Koch?
Motion that we approve the Consent Agenda minus 6.1 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And now we'll talk about item 6.1, approve the October 26, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Ms. Williams, I know you had said you had some issues getting this together. If you just want to give the council an update?
Yeah, staff is just recommending that this item be polled and placed on the next future meeting agenda for approval and council's consideration due to the length of the meeting and also some technical issues that we were having. Just, we're still transcribing those meeting minutes. I'll have it the next meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to table item 6.1 to the next meeting?
So move.
Second.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? All right, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, and three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCAC.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. First presentation is with mixed feelings. I'd like to wish happy retirement to Dan Blazer. Happy for him, but sad to see him go. He's retiring from a 33-year career with the city and working in our Public Works Department, Maintenance Services Division. Dan was hired in Street Maintenance on May 31st, 1988, as a Maintenance Worker 1, and through the years, Dan was promoted to Maintenance Worker 2, Service Worker 2, Equipment Operator 1, Heavy Equipment Operator, Maintenance Specialist, Engineering Tech, and finished out his career as a Transportation Specialist. Dan, thank you for your dedication and service to Lake Havasu City. We're gonna miss you. Well, our CERT vehicle arrived. It's currently getting, we received delivery, and it's currently getting outfitted with equipment, and will be in service by the end of November to serve the community needs for the next 20 years. Thank you to Chief Palafas and his team for taking the lead and making this happen. CERT is an outstanding group of volunteers that provide rehab to firefighters, first aid, and traffic control for all our different special events, and we're very grateful for our volunteers that provide such great service to our community and to our fire team. Lake Havasu City, of course, celebrated our golden anniversary just last month, and all the events were very successful and well-attended. Thank you to all the city staff and crews for your assistance in the planning, setting up, and cleaning after the city events. And thank you to the community for getting involved and participating in all the wonderful festivities. Now we get to look forward to planning the next 50th celebration, which will be in 2028 as we celebrate our golden anniversary for the cities and corporation. We have some time. Lots of activity, Mayor, with different proclamations and activities throughout the community in the last several weeks. You presented, Mayor, you presented a proclamation to the Havasu Pioneers at the Freedom Bridge Walkway Dedication. You presented a proclamation to the Havasu Stitchers at their annual quilt show. You provided a certificate for Mayor's Choice at Havasu Regional Medical Center's Scarecrow Competition, which was awarded to Labor and Delivery, was the winner. And you dropped in on a Welcome Home mission at the VFW for United States Marine Corps Sergeant Stephen Orth, who was recently returning home from a deployment in Afghanistan. His dad, Jim Orth, is a retired firefighter with Lake Havasu City Fire Department. Welcome home, Stephen, and thank you for your service. As a reminder, city offices are closed on Thursday, November 11th, in honor of Veterans Day. Of course, police and fire services are always unaffected by our holidays as they run 24/7, 3/65, and trash schedule will not be interrupted for, at all, this week. So please join us on the state at Main Street for the Veterans Day Parade. The parade begins at a coma at 10:00 AM and ends at Wheeler Park with a ceremony. Please expect a temporary, please expect a disruption in traffic as the road closures and delays in the area will occur for the duration of the parade. And lastly, an update from some recent COVID information. I do want to note that the Public Health Department is changing how they're delivering some of the statistics. So we're now getting information that's not specialized or, yeah, specialized just for Lake Havasu City boundaries. Information we're getting, including the emails that are received, are for the Lake Havasu area. So keep that in mind. Some of the numbers, as they come in now, are gonna be inflated as you compare it to the previous months, so take that in consideration. As of November 9th, it looks like there have been an increase from the 26th to the 9th, 317 cases. Again, that's not just Lake Havasu, but that's the surrounding area. So Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, item eight, Public Hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Poor House at 2093 McCullough Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Lori Baker has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Poor House located at 2093 McCullough Boulevard. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here today to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Council, of Ms. Williams, or of the applicant? Any discussion before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Poor House, 2093 McCullough Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Mustard Seed at 2061 Swanson Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Rachel Shows has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Mustard Seed located at 2061 Swanson Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also in attendance to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions of the Council, of the applicant, or of Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter?
Council, I don't know where 2061 Swanson is. When you post that on the board, could you not maybe have a little map, a couple of streets, so we can be kind of familiar where the area is? So especially the other one on McCullough. I don't know exactly where those numbers are on McCullough.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. The agenda is posted several days before this meeting with all of this information, if you have any specifics, but this particular one is on the corner of Swanson and Mulberry. So it's on the corner of Swanson and Mulberry. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, would anyone else like to address the Council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to Council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Moses?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Mustard Seed, 2161 2061 Swanson Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Place To Be, 333 Lake Havasu Avenue South. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Vincent DeCisto has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Place To Be located at 333 Lake Havasu Avenue South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections are received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Geographically, this happens to be like a cross. Perfect. All right, good. For the others, it's by Las Lagos across the street. Any questions or comments from members of the Council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Place To Be, 333 Lake Havasu Avenue South.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next is item 8.4, a Series 10 Beer and Wine Liquor License for motor and boat fuel, food and fuel, excuse me, at 2890 Jamaica Boulevard South. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Susan Marie Stocker has applied for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for motor and boat, food and fuel located at 2890 Jamaica Boulevard South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 10 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here today.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? This one's located on Jamaica and Shemewavy Boulevard at the corner. It's a gas station facility that's been there for several years. Any, any comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing on this one, bring it back to Council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for motor and boat, food, and fuel, 2890 Jamaica Boulevard South. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is a Series 7 Beer and Wine Liquor License for summer, ray, wine, and bar, or excuse me, summer, ray, wine, bar, and local eatery at 2097 McCullough Boulevard North, Unit 100. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Summer Dilshner has applied for a Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License for summer, ray, wine, bar, and local eatery located at 2097 McCullough Boulevard North, Unit 100. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 7 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here tonight to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? This one's located in the Main Street area. It's in that same area, yes, near the Poor House. Yeah, we need you on a microphone for Call to the Public when we do that, so we will open the Call to the Public. Would anyone like to address the Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public and bring it back to Council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona-
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License for Summer Ray Wine Ray Wine Bar and Local Eatery, 2097 McCullough Boulevard North, 100.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.6 is adopt ordinance number 21-1271 to amend the local amendments to the 2018 International Fire Code regarding automatic sprinkler systems for our occupancy. Division Chief Hartman, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Up for adoption this evening is the ordinance to amend the local amendments to the 2018 International Fire Code. This was presented at the last council meeting, but I would be happy to go over and answer any questions if you had.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Division Chief Hartman for many members of the council? All right, seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. So as the Division Chief said, we, this was introduced at our last meeting. This is presented to us right now for possible adoption, if that's the direction council wants to go.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, please. Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1271, amending the Lake Havasu City amendments to the 2018 International Fire Code and declaring the revised amendments a public record.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 8.7, adopt ordinance number 21-1272, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of the center planned development 97-005, removing and rezoning 6701 Highway 95, the center parcel plat north, parcel one, from general commercial plan development C2PD to a new C2PD to allow self-storage, mini-storage, truck-trailer sharing, covered RV canopies, delivery and receiving area, showroom and retail, related retail uses, and a 45-foot building height exception. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. Show you the area map for the property. The subject property is located at the northern entrance into the city at the northwest corner of London Bridge Road and Highway 95. It's directly north of Showplace Avenue and London Bridge Road intersection. It's about 10 and 1/4 acres. It's triangular shaped with, it's about 550 feet across the bottom, about 11, excuse me, 1,700 feet long on each side. The site was rough graded in 2009. It's about 10 to 15 feet below the elevation of Highway 95. There's an existing signal light at the intersection of Highway 95 and London Bridge Road. The site is currently undeveloped and has no access from Highway 95. The only access is from London Bridge Road. As far as the property zoning, it's current, the properties to the south across London Bridge Road are Zone C2 planned development and are a mix of storage units and vacant land. The vacant lands to the west are owned by the State of Arizona and the Bureau of Land Management and are zoned agricultural preservation. The property to the east across the highway is, is part of the city airport. Getting a little bit of the history of the property. The subject property is the northernmost portion of the 215-acre center planned development that was approved in 1997. This was the entire area of the, now the current mall and some outlined parcels. That planned development rezoned for the entire, rezoned the entire acreage to C2 planned development and it approved a general development plan that designated three commercial areas and one regional mall area. So the regional mall area is the shops at Lake Havasu City. Anderson Toyota area is another of the commercial nodes. To the south, near Home Depot, is one of the other commercial nodes. And then this triangular piece, the subject property, is the final third commercial node. There have been amendments to the planned development for the properties to the south of the subject property, but none of those amendments have included this subject property. A little more information about that. The letter of intent, excuse me, go on to the next slide here. The letter of intent for the property calls out developing the property as a three-story, 45-foot-tall self-storage building with mini-storage, truck-trailer sharing, covered RV canopies, delivery and receiving area, showroom and related retail uses. This is the subject site plan that was presented with the property. It's been edited a little bit and cleaned up to make it presentable for this subject, for this hearing. It proposes, the proposed uses include 92 mini-storage units on the outside of the building. They're here in kind of this blue color around the perimeter, portions of the perimeter of the building. There are 84 covered RV spaces, which are shown here in red, indicated here with the point outs in red. There are 13 open RV covers, or open spaces down here on the southern portion of the property. Of course, a U-Haul display area, a shunting area where they would have the vehicles that are being turned, U-Haul vehicles that are being turned over, and of course, customer parking. The main building here is about 53,000 square feet, 45 foot in height, indoor storage, showroom and office, and delivery and receiving for the, for the project. They've also submitted a landscaping plan. The landscaping plan shows required landscaping buffers adjacent to the Highway 95 right-of-way and London Bridge Road. It shows at least that 10% of the lot area is landscaped. The proposed trees along the highway and London Bridge Road should help as a buffer between the right-of-way and the subject development, and the proposed landscaping as shown meets the Development Code standards. The applicant also provided a couple of building elevations. Here's the elevation shown from London Bridge Road as you're coming into town, so we're looking toward the south. The maximum height of the building in the C2 zoning district is 25 feet. The applicant is asking for 45 foot, so they're asking for a height exception to allow 20-foot taller buildings, so up to maximum 45 feet. The request for the height exception allows the building obviously be seen more, more evidently from Highway 95. The majority of this site, again, as I said, sits below elevation of Highway 95, about 10 feet, 10 to 15 feet or so. In these elevations that they provided, they do not show the landscaping trees that would be required, so please keep that in mind with, when you review this. Building permits and design review will be required prior to development of the property. So this is the view from London Bridge Road. Here's another view from, excuse me, that was a view from Highway 95. Here's the view from London Bridge Road looking north up at the property. The Planning Commission heard this request at their October 6th meeting. Several of the commissioners expressed concerns about the visual impact of the proposed 45-foot tall building and the covered storage areas at the northern gateway of the city. The Planning Commission recommended denial of this request by a vote of four to two. Based on the Planning Commission's recommendation, the suggested motion before you today is for denial of the request. And my understanding is the applicant has said that there is a representative from U-Haul should be here today for the meeting. Open any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Is there a representative from U-Haul that's with us this evening? All right, well, council, are there any questions of Mr. Morris? From members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Don Wisdom, council. This is exactly what I'm talking about. They're just looking for a zone change, and look what they presented. Nothing like the courthouse or the lawn bank we have up there. Good job, whoever did that. My first time coming into Havasu, driving down the hill, and there's a lake. Wow. And then I moved here, and there's the lake. Wow. This is Lake Havasu, not RV Storage Storage City. This is Lake Havasu. We don't need this when we come into town. This is, if you want to see something like this, I'll go to Phoenix. I didn't move here for this. This is totally out of line, totally out of line. If they want to put it someplace where you can't see it and block the view of the lake and everything else, great, they can put it somewhere else. But when it affects the village, the lake view coming into town, this is Lake Havasu. Lake Havasu. That's our claim to fame is the lake besides London Bridge. The lake, that's what people come here for, not to see this. There's lots of storage in this town, and apparently they need more, but put it somewhere else, somewhere else. And like I said before, I vote, so pay attention to what you do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ted Boyd of 1345 Angler Place, and I want to echo the sentiments the other two gentlemen said. This is not something you want to see coming down the hill of Havasu. Now, I'm not against this project, but just not there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Sandy Blair, 221 Roundup Drive. I agree with the other gentleman, and I also would like to comment on why are we getting rid of all these height restrictions? I've seen a few of them, and that was a biggie that McCullough had. I was here in 1970. I mean, my dad bought in 68, so I have a long history here, and that was some of McCullough's thing is to keep the views for everybody with the nice dome, and we need to pay attention to keeping that. And also, yeah, there's nothing better than when you come into town, you see the lake, and it's, ah, I'm home, you know? Don't ruin that, please. Thank you.
My name is David Diaz. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I sat on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm not, I'm not speaking for the entire plan. I'm speaking for David Diaz right now. I was one of the commissioners that voted against this, and as Ted said, I'm not against U-Haul. In fact, I use U-Haul quite often, but a 10-acre prime piece of real estate, right when you're entering town and you can see the lake, you're going to ruin the view. So I think the city would be much better to look and maybe work with the PED to get businesses over there to look at retail, restaurants, whatever, but that is a prime piece of real estate going into town, and I think we could do a lot better than that. And once I voted against that project, I had numerous people call me up, send me emails to say thank you. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion, possible motion. So again, this is coming before us from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation of denial for this particular project. Any questions, comments, members of the council?
I do.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane, please.
Thank you. First of all, I will make a motion, but I also want to have a comment on public disclosure. The people that brought this or bringing this before the council called me at home and asked to meet with me personally behind the scenes, and I told them that that was inappropriate. Anything that needed to be discussed would be discussed here in public view, but I wanted it brought to the public's attention that I did receive a phone call from the company.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion when, you ready?
Is there some?
Yeah, I, before we vote, I just, however this turns out, I'd just like to make the sentiment that I wish they were here, so we could talk to them and tell them this in person, but no matter what, we really appreciate their interest in Lake Havasu and their willingness to, to bring business and development to our town.
Thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor Koch?
So just to kind of reiterate, I think it's been, I've said it before at other projects that have been brought up, but we, I think we've all been in consensus for the most part over the years that we don't want to see the highways lined with storage units as we come in. Everybody appreciates a storage unit. There's a need for them, but it's got to be in the right place at the right time. So with that being said, appreciate when businesses want to come to town, but there is a right place for them and, and right as you come into town, a project like this, and right behind the sign, it just takes away from it, so that...
Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I move to deny ordinance number 21-1272, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of the center planned development 97-005, removing and rezoning 6701 Highway 95, the center parcel plat north, parcel one, from general commercial plan development to a new general commercial plan development to allow self-storage, mini-storage, truck-trailer sharing, covered RV canopies, delivery and receiving area, showroom and related retail uses, and a 45-foot building height exception as shown on the attached development plan, including the site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Any further discussion? I will just say, because this is already a planned development, this allows us to really manage this parcel very well, so that we took this opportunity. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did a really fantastic job. I watched through the work that they did to vet this. Obviously, council had discussion here tonight, but we're able to do it because it's a planned development, so just that, that's the mechanism in which, which we're operating. With nothing else, I believe we're ready. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, second from Councilmember Dolan, and I believe we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item, next item is item 8.8, approve the purchase of 1 2022 F-250 4x4 SD Crew Cab vehicle for the command staff vehicle from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, Chief Pilafis.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is approval to purchase 1 2022 Ford 250 4x4 Super Duty Crew Cab for a command vehicle utilizing the Cooperative Purchase Agreement through Santan Ford. The cooperative agreement gives us the best price under state, state contract. This is also for the outfitting for this command vehicle. This type of vehicle is used daily by our battalion chiefs as a 911 response vehicle. This is replacing a 2007, a 15-year-old vehicle that is in the command staff fleet. We have a total of seven vehicles. We have one more 2007 that will be due for replacement soon, but this is part of our replacement plan for our vehicle to get us back on track to use small incremental steps to replace our fleet instead of doing them all at once that occurred in 2007. So just looking for your approval to go ahead with this purchase. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions of council? Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question or concern.
Yes.
You guys are buying a lot of stuff, and the heat's coming down on me at the council. So, no, I appreciate it. I'm going to pass, I'm going to vote for this, but it seems like we've been getting a lot of requests for, they're spending all this money. Every time we open up the newspaper, they're spending, 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 so I understand they all were purchased at the same time. I understand there was $46,000 in maintenance, I believe, on this project, this particular vehicle. So I've done my homework on it. I think you need it, but for all of you out there, I think he needs it, but I do agree we need to start watching all this spending. People are getting mad.
Then, any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter?
Ted Boyd again. I am a retired firefighter from the Los Angeles County Fire Department, and as being a retired firefighter, I know the needs of equipment. Nothing should be put above public safely, safety. So I moved, or I'd move, or I would like you guys to approve this for the fire department, because if the chief says he needs it, he needs it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for additional discussion or possible motion.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
And Ms. Campbell brought up a good point, that people will say that we're spending money here, we're spending money there. Yeah, we do, and this is budgeted funds. We are a town of fifty-seven thousand people, and it does cost us money to run this city. And before anybody here was here, they purchased a whole bunch of vehicles in two thousand seven, and Chief Paloffis is doing a really good job of trying to spread that out over the years, so that, I mean, this vehicle has lasted us, what, fifteen years now? Fourteen years? So in fourteen years, we don't have the same problem, where we're spending all kinds of money today, fourteen years from now, we're going to spend all kinds of money again. The city staff is doing a really good job, as Ms. Campbell pointed out, to try to spread this out. So, yeah, we are spending some dollars, but the dollars we're spending are for you. They're not for us, they're for you. Redundant water supply, millions of dollars, the public safety equipment. God forbid, somebody's responding to an emergency, and their vehicle stops running, and they're two miles short of who needs help. So just for the public that says we're spending a lot of money, we are, but it takes a lot of money to run the city, and all the money we're spending is for projects for all of you, so. Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion. Unless you have another comment.
I just want to respond to that as well. I can totally agree. I think safety is a top priority for our community, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we have been looking at maintenance agreements, I mean, maintenance costs for our community and what it does take to run the city. And so all these new products that are showing up are needed, what I've seen so far. That's why I voted yes for, I think, every one of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Just add to that, I mean, I get those same comments, but I encourage the community to join our meetings when we have the budget discussions and the equipment, and everybody wants to point fingers and say, we're spending, spending black and white comments, and that's too much money, and this and that, and there's a lot more to it than that. We, we don't just come up here and just throw a dartboard at the budget. There, that's like I said, I get those comments too, but I try to explain to them, well, you have a problem with a specific vehicle that costs seventy thousand dollars, are you aware of how much we cost to maintain that? And sometimes they're surprised at those numbers too. So there's always more to it, and I'm not saying just take my word for it, but the community, there is a lot of opportunities to get involved. We have a lot of planning sessions, budget work sessions. Please come, please ask questions. It's just those random, you're doing too much. Well, then I kind of, I try to explain it to them, but I also move on to the next thing and make the decision I have to make based on the education and the information I have at hand. So I just try to remind people that there is more to it than just we're spending money. So we are spending money for needs that we have in the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two F-two-fifty four-by-four SD crew cab vehicle, command staff vehicle with Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, in the amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents, utilizing Cooperative Purchase Agreement two-four-six-four.
Second?
There you go.
Look at us all. We're all excited for you to have that truck.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and is it a second by Councilmember Campbell? Is it? What do you have on your end, Ms. Williams? Oh, there we are. All right, so Councilmember Lane has a motion, second is by Councilmember Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item eight-point-nine, award the bid for the refurbishment of one Fire Department two thousand seven Pierce Velocity Pumper Engine to Fire Trucks Unlimited, Chief Paloffis.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is a bid to refurbish one of our two thousand seven Pierce Velocities. It's a current asset, it has been paid off. Part of my plan for the replacement program, when I got here, the city manager asked me to put a five-year plan together, and that's what I did. And I put this plan together to look at different options and pilot program to be more cost-effective, and this is a great option to take one of our current assets, refurbit. So we solicited bids, we only had one sole provider, Fire Trucks Unlimited, out of Henderson, Nevada, and they came within spec, within budget. It is a budgeted item that was laid out, that was approved by the board during our budget process, and this is just another method to extend the life of our current assets, and it's cost about less than a half of a new rig. A new engine is costing between about eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars. And sometimes we just don't have control over the pricing. I mean, the economy's in a fragile state with all of the supply chain issues and issues like that. And I know sometimes it gets uncomfortable bringing these all at once, but it does take time to get the bids out, and it's just sometimes timing. And the thing is, when we follow a plan that was budgeted for, it just takes up time, and now we're executing all of those. So I look forward to the next board meeting, too.
Spoiler alert. Yeah.
So if you have any questions, they met the specs, this is a budgeted item, and again, this is a pilot program to use some of our assets that we currently have, refurbish, it'll be just like new when you see it, and extend that life for another five to ten years.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, thank you. Your Councilmember Dolan?
Maybe just also, we can explain the basic budgeting process, too, how this, I mean, we've already approved this in the budget process. Anything over fifty thousand dollars, when it's ready to be spent, has to come before council. So we've already approved this in our budget, it's approved at the beginning of the year, but this is the procedure we go through, so even though it's all coming in at this time, and maybe you have another truck coming up in the next queue, it's all in this year's budget, and we knew we were going to spend it, it's not, sometimes it's a surprise what it comes in at, if it's under budget or over budget, but just to remind people of that budget process, so.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know what a pumper engine vehicle looks like, but if it's going to be out for six to eight months, do we have another one? Is it going to affect the service? Because if that specific vehicle is out?
It is not going to affect our service. We have reserved trucks. It will, we have contingency plans to use some of the quints or trucks that we have, so a truck is a ladder truck and capable pumping at the same time, two functions. So, no, we are going to be covered, I'm just going to work closely with maintenance to make sure that nothing breaks. I mean, I do have an older fleet that I'm trying to slowly, you know, replace, it just takes time.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, how much is a new engine?
A new engine right now priced out is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And how many years of service do you get out of those?
So on a frontline engine, usually I'm going to get ten years of service, I'm going to reevaluate it, put it five into reserve. So for a pumper, I'm looking at about fifteen to twenty years plus now.
Okay. And how many years of service you anticipate you'll get out of this?
You know what, since this is our pilot program, I'm looking for an extra ten years out of it.
Okay. So I mean, penciling out, it's about right there with buying a brand-new one, and this will solve our problem of having that big balloon payment to replace everything, so I really appreciate your work on this, and I think it's a very smart strategic approach. Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate your support.
Great. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. First off, I just, this kind of goes with the last item and what I was talking about. So I just want to say thank you for coming up with an alternate solution and spend, you saved us five hundred thousand dollars by rehabbing a truck instead of buying a brand-new truck. We want trucks that work. All of you that have come to these council meetings for a while, you've heard me say, don't step over a dollar to save a dime, and that's what this is, we're making sure that we're spending that dollar, not just the dime, by saving you money and getting the truck rehabbed instead of buying a brand-new one. So, Chief, once again, you're coming up with alternate solutions, and we truly do appreciate that, as do the citizens that are actually the ones that are paying for it all, so thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to thank my apparatus committee. They've been working very hard diligently with the specs for the rehab and our new rig, so they've taken time out of their day on duty and off duty without receiving compensation to make sure that we have the equipment needed for our community. So I rest you assured that we're doing the right thing for our community, because we all live here.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or motion. Councilmember Moses?
Yeah. I move to award the bid for the refurbishment of one Fire Department two thousand seven Pierce Velocity Pumper Engine to the Fire Trucks Unlimited in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty-five, plus applicable tax.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Lynn, if you could potentially, thank you. All right, so yeah, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Lynn. Any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight-point-ten is award bid to American Road Maintenance for runway fourteen dash three-two seal coat application materials. Mr. Frostley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Mayor and council, I'd like to bring to your attention a very dangerous situation that's developing out at our airport specifically with our runway. Our runway was originally constructed in nineteen ninety-one, and we've performed very limited pavement maintenance over the last thirty years, so what's happening today is the pavement is actually crumbling. It's unraveling, and it's creating what we call in airport speak FOD, which is foreign object debris. FOD is incredibly dangerous to aircraft. In fact, we recently had an aircraft pop a tire upon landing, and he, the pilot actually attributed that to the FOD on the runway. So we do have a long-term plan to fix this, and our runway reconstruction project is currently in the design phase. We do have monies programmed in next fiscal year for the construction of a new runway. However, that construction could be up to a year off and possibly even more, depending on when FAA is going to release their grant funding. So we need to do something in the interim. The interim solution is a seal coat on the worst part of the runway to basically hold it all together until we get in there and repave the entire thing. So we, we did do a solicitation for a seal coat project. We received two bids. The low bid was submitted by American Road Maintenance out of Gilbert. We were not familiar with them, so we did our due diligence, and they, as it turns out, they do a lot of airport runway paving work. We got some very positive responses about the firm, so because of all of this, we are recommending approval of the seal coat contract tonight, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frostley. Are there any questions of any members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the bid for runway fourteen dash thirty-two seal coat project to American Road Maintenance in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Coke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Item nine is our current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Sure. Just, we had our NPO board meeting today and a couple things that came up with that. One of them was that ADOT has announced that they have signed their contracts for their prison work program, so that they will once again be using prisoners to pick up trash along Highway ninety-five, and also they have a contract for street sweeping, and will be street sweeping State Route ninety-five. So we should see a lot more work being done out there on Highway ninety-five, along with what's happening with ADOT, working with our city manager and staff to repave Highway ninety-five. Hopefully, we'll see a lot more work, and we can get some work done on that highway. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lee. Any other council committee reports? All right, future meetings, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, at six PM. It will be a regular meeting, and then on Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six PM, we will also have a regular meeting. Item eleven, future discussion items, are there any future discussion items? Item twelve, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Be kind, and we'll see you next time.